Federal government danger.
Let's see. Because I know the fire department gets big prices. Yeah. Just kind of double check because sometimes they forget.
Okay.
Or somebody who's doing maintenance.
I wouldn't, yeah, notice that. Okay, so I want counsel to move for to give the cost of the truck tires up from nine fifty to eleven fifty-one. And then the one ton work thirty-three hundred, F-150 for four hundred, oil pads for six fifty. And we will try to beat those prices.
Well, I have some discussion, but I'll make a motion that we accept these changes.
One second.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, the discussion is, because I didn't bring my budget in, I don't know where we sit with regard to budget.
Oh, this is the magic.
It's the refund, right.
The refund. And we have like twenty-eight thousand dollars to spend on this, that, and the other this year. Or no, twenty-four, twenty-eight. And it's from monies collected in years past. And so.
And so this is just small potatoes.
It's small potatoes compared to the overall budget.
All right, good enough.
And this is just all the safety and OSHA and maintenance stuff that we do.
So it's basically already covered.
Yeah, it's in a different fund, it's not in our general fund.
Okay, okay. Two seconds. Excuse me, two seconds. Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I had to top up a little bit, I'm sorry, my hearing may be working real well.
Yes, sir.
If I could chime in, not to throw monkey wrench in things, but if you haven't looked at it, I don't know whether they've saved you money or not, but I know that almost all the rest of the municipalities in the county are shifting over to fleet management down at the county for their vehicle maintenance, their tires, their oil changes, a little bit. And I don't know if anybody's looked into that, but I'm assuming that they're all doing this just because it's saving them money.
I tried to, but I didn't know how to get a hold of it. If you can give me the information, I will look into it.
I will.
And see if it will save money on like oil changes you said and tires and.
It would be, they would take responsibility for all of the fleet maintenance.
I'll think.
And so you would get regular notices from them, hey, either for mileage or time your vehicle due for maintenance, kind of bring it in.
Okay, if you give me the information, I'll gladly contact them and I'll do the later comment.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah.
Do we have some guidelines on, what do I call it, snow piling the roads this year? Because I've had an awful lot of citizens complain that the side roads are not getting done. And I know that's a problem, but we need to really address that, we really need to get this clouded.
The, we've got a root that we did now, because we've got minimal time. And we don't still have the money in the street fund. And we talked about using some of the money in the stormwater fund, because snow is also water, it doesn't have to rain. And we haven't looked at that yet. The only time we had a really bad problem was snow so hard, well, three years ago.
Well, last year was the most wonderful year.
Yeah.
So.
So can we look into that maybe next meeting?
Well, okay, we'll bring that up next meeting, we will take a look at this note about the hill, but again, it comes into what's in the budget.
I know, we really need to get, I mean, we're talking about the citizens' way and getting in and out to work.
I understand.
And the citizens' safety. And the city's main goal is to always put the citizens first. And so if we have to cut stuff, then we better start cutting to get these side roads cleared. Because, I mean, isn't it really bad?
You're gonna get sorry next council leading all that, because that's what we discussed in 2013 and '14.
Okay, then let's work on it.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, what do we got here next? Ma'am? Okay. Okay, well, there's nothing to show on Laura Kelly, I'll give you, sorry, the cases are unreported. I talked to AWC and they said they've heard nothing, they've heard nothing back from the employment security, she got denied, and there has seemed to have been no appeals or anything else, they've heard nothing. And this, in the prosecutor's office, and I left a message with the state auditor, and hadn't called back yet, but there's been no activity. So as far as I know, the city is done with that, and it's in somebody else's baby work. Any, do you want to come in?
Yeah, well, how about a city clerk from the court part?
Yeah, I love it. The, I didn't make a call, I didn't go to Profflin, and they're real good recruiters, and they came up empty and just quit returning my calls. And then I have called around, and I'm gonna call around some more to see if there's some part-time city clerks around who would like another two-day job. Really, for right now, when we're trying to get everything in order, what we need most is probably a two-day, a week, highly experienced city clerk to come in and get things straight, according to, they have to know all the rules, you know, ten thousand rules. Including the rules on how to label your file cabinet and stuff like this. And that's, to me, that's probably the first thing we have to go through, is the organization of files.
But do we have in place a job description?
Oh, yeah, we had one, I don't know how good it is, but so.
So maybe we need to update that, and then maybe get it to WorkSource and kind of WorkSource start advertising with that job description and the caller.
I don't know that right, job description for a city clerk. There's a whole bunch of, basically, there is a whole bunch of three-ring binders full of stuff that you have to know. It's not, the education requirements are probably eighth grade math and ninth grade English, okay?
That's fine, but we still need to have a job description, we still need to get that job description updated. We need to take that updated job description, give it to WorkSource, have WorkSource publish it, and start looking for a city clerk. Sitting on our doves and hoping that we have a okay job description is not getting the job done.
Does WC possibly have one?
Is what now?
Does AWC possibly?
There's a place that has the information, we gave you the clerk, tell me, you have all that information we sent in?
No, I, what I was thinking about doing is maybe going to Mike Sullivan, see if they have one, maybe going to Monroe, see if they have one. Take a look at both of those job descriptions.
You want to do that?
I'll do it.
Fantastic, thank you.
So I want to follow up with the comment you made, that you called the auditor's office and then you just made a statement that, as far as you understood, the city had, we're done with this. But wouldn't we really want an audit done?
Oh, wait, that is at work. Now, I don't know where that is in their practice, like with the county prosecutor. I mean, you know, you got domestic violence, you got murders, you got car thieves, and you got paid zero dollar either misdemeanor or felony. It's crazy, really. And I, and I, when the last time I talked to the, to the supervisor, she sort of left the impression, we're really busy right now, so we're reporting stuff. And, and there's been no evidence of any money lost, so, you know.
But we wouldn't know that without an audit.
Oh, we had the audit, we had the audit in 2011, we had had Harry go through the charade, we can't identify anything, anything monetarily missing.
Right.
Now, we found a lot of sloppiness, we found a lot of things that had to be corrected and errors, but nothing that we can identify, so. Joe, would you mind stepping up so we can hear you?
Mr. Ware, I can speak to that a little bit, I made a public records request pending the fraud audit, it's still ongoing. A client to Ms. Wilkins, or, her name is Wilkins, Charlotte Wilkins, back a phone to the email. The fraud audit is still ongoing, and will be ongoing, she does not expect it to end until sometime in January. So we're looking at it pretty much, it's been months, and it's still ongoing for months more. And that's all, you know, that matters, but once I get the public records back, I'll have to call them again.
Okay. Any more comments?
No.
Okay, so you're gonna chase the job descriptions and.
And the fleet thing, so I'll take care of that.
And the fleet, okay.
Joe?
Yes?
Council cannot have anything to do with job qualifications, they only can do confirmation.
Yes, we're strictly.
They're strictly for confirmation, they cannot do anything with job description. You cannot have a work session on what you would like to upgrade or anything, that's been passed years ago.
Was it a resolution or RCW or what?
I can't tell you, all I know is that it was done years ago, and they were very firm about it, because the subject had been brought to the table about a job description, and it was cut right there. They can do confirmation only.
We can have a manual, an employee manual.
Well, we have an employee manual, and it has a job description in it.
But you.
Can we get it updated?
You, the council themselves cannot tweak the qualifications, that's you.
Oh, oh, no, that's not even me.
No, 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 we can go back together.
The qualifications for a city clerk are set in RCW.
Are set in RCW. But the staff itself cannot tweak it in any way, they can only do qualification, or they can only do confirmation.
Okay.
But that does it perflude us from going out and hunting one down, right?
Oh, I'm.
That's just that gathering.
That's just that gathering, okay.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't like to interfere, I don't.
Hey, Mrs. Card, start town hall. Okay, yes, sir, any more questions?
No.
Questions? Okay, we'll move on. Well repaired contractor. Okay, did some looking here with the MRSC, and we're looking at bringing in someone to do some serious work on the well. And we have given contact three times, I believe, in the past, to help them do the work, and quite satisfied with their analysis and their work and everything else. If we go out, if we go for bids in a couple of different ways, you have to go out and you get bids made, and then you have to take the lowest bidder. And it depends on how cleverly you write the bid specification to keep from getting the low bid yielded. And it's just either we go small works, or you go hire an engineer firm to write a spec, and go up for bids, the formal thing, you end up with the lowest bidder, and you have, once the spec is met, you have no option to do a quality thing. Now, there are under seventy-five hundred dollars we don't beat bids, and it turns out that MRSC said, hey, also for public works, you have two criteria, under forty thousand for a single graph, under seventy-five thousand for two or more graphs. So our last quote on doing the, doing the work here was Pump Tech, this was done back in January, and it came out to be like thirty-one thousand dollars to do this, and that's with a repaired motor. And we talked before about, rather than spending, what, three thousand dollars on an estimate to repair the motor, as opposed to sixty-six hundred to find a new one, we'd probably be smarter by doing it. Now, did some looking, and hate to admit, Jake Pure may have a good idea.
No.
I did look at one of the early, early analyses of the well, and they talked about going to a submersible pump. And then I checked what I could on submersible pumps, and it's in the same neighborhood of prices as the new motor. So it's not out of the question, and also we found some interesting things about it. When we get to pull the well apart, we'll look at what we actually got, re-measure, see where the eight-inch, see where the pumps actually are in the well. And, and do a lot of stuff like that. So John and I are gonna work and write up a to-do list of things for the well. We're gonna sit down with Pump Tech, probably go to, we'll probably just go over to Bellevue to do it, and get them to give us a quote that we know what we're getting. And then hopefully we'll have that ready for next time, so that we can motivate off of this.
Any questions, comments? No, I think this is a good thing to do, but it's still in the back of my mind at the same time that we'll have to, we'll have to look at next year's budget and see how it comes out, but it's still in the back of my mind as to whether the water works as something we really want to hang on to as a city.
Yeah, I, what we've got, we had the two thousand eighth letter from the Department of Health to do these, one dozen things, I don't know, eleven, twelve, ten, something like that. And we are complete, we should complete all of them essentially this year. We're also, we held off doing the water comprehensive plan, which is late, because it would have been obsolete the day it came out if we hadn't finished it. We're ready to finish the water comprehensive plan, we stopped the big leaks we had, so we're within the federal requirements for water loss. We've got the new reservoir, which was the spear in the ground, the Department of Health. And we get all the last bit of work done, which is paying the tax. At that time then, we will, we will be clean from all that work, I've already contacted PUD about this, and they're, they're ready to take a look at it when it's done, but obviously we go ahead and finish our hot plan, because they don't do analysis for free.
So, yes, so Jay and I have talked this, and this is the right thing to do for maintenance, I believe.
And it's also required because the USDA grant, there's a chunk of money in there that's assigned to do this sort of stuff.
Started off this with another comment about what is the city doing in the water department or something?
Oh, no, no, no.
Water business. Water business, thank you.
So it's, so the comment is, it's been suggested by some citizens that we might consider sale of the water. The water, the ocean, the water works.
Sell?
Yeah. PUD.
Yeah, PUD.
So. So this is not, we're not discussing that here and now, first off. But I just wanted to make the statement that, so I understand doing the work we need to do, but it's still in the back of my mind as to whether or not we want to consider, that's a budget issue to be discussed within the budget.
Exit to.
Actually, a budget issue, why is there a budget issue with the water?
Waters to the bank?
Yeah. Supremely.
I would think, I would think if you're gonna look at giving or whatever the city water system, PUD, it would be very, it would be a good idea to look at the city taking over PUD, because any municipality that has control over their water is a lot better off than a city that doesn't have the control over the water.
So, and again, the mayor's comment previous was that the primary function of the city is health and safety of the community. And one of the issues, and again, we're getting off track here, but one of the issues that's come up is whether or not we have the quantity or the quality of staff to monitor.
You bet we do, we're in the green, we've been in the green, we've never been out of the green, and we don't intend to be out of the green. If there's ever a question about the quality of work that goes in to this water system, or the quality of the water that goes to your faucet, to anybody's, call the health department.
Our rural water are certain little places, but when you go to the outside agencies who do this for a living, we do well.
Something happens in the middle of the night, you got people that pass. Something happens on the weekend, you got people that pass. All the way.
Okay. All right. All right, number five, that's you.
I, my idea is, is I would like to, I've never seen a copy of the, the public records procedure.
It's in your inbox, you may want.
I can't open it, I've tried twice anyway, I keep getting this black screen.
Then I'll print it out for you.
You know, I had to go and, because all of a sudden I couldn't get through my email, this is weird, I got a white page, it was black, it was white.
Mine was black.
Yours was black. So, so I went down and I was talking with Denise about, I don't have all that stuff. And I just, and I happen to remember that I did have it in my phone, I have a little memo pad, so I had to redo all of that to get it. And then I finally got smart and made a bookmark, so I don't screw it up next time.
No, the only question.
It's really fuzzy.
Well, let's back up in there, let's back up. You guys had a problem, you couldn't open the files, I got with the IT guy, suddenly things got changed, and the certificate note went away, because I was doing.
No.
It didn't, it did, it did online, I went and checked that.
It did, not mine. Lights nowhere.
Okay, okay. So it could still have some improvement perhaps.
Anyway, that is.
But if we had just some ways, some connection, as, you know, I got lucky, I found it in my phone book, because I was trying to go back through my civilian email to find all the stuff, and I didn't have it there, so I put it on my.
What's happened about it?
The initial address that you plug in to get to the mail. You don't just say mail.
Oh, okay.
It has this whole long thing.
Okay, is that your problem?
Yeah.
And I didn't have that information.
Oh. Okay, I'll write you a note. I'll send you, and I'll print it out and I'll hand it to you.
The only question I have is, do we have something in place where the IT guy goes into the emails every, say, quarter? Pulls all the, all the city emails and puts it out a CD, you know, CD and.
All the city emails are on the server.
Archives it someplace, so that if someone happened to come into Denise's desk and said, I would like to have, you know, the public records from this day to this day, she could just go over, grab that little CD and say, here's your copy for the first quarter.
The, we, that takes time and effort to do, and we've, and we've got it set up for two thousand nine, working in two thousand ten, okay? And that's just the workload we got. The answer to your question is, as far as the non-exempt emails, that's being put together, and it has been done for a while, so we may get a cleaner presentation.
So does every email after you pull up for a public record, does it always have to go to the history to be improved?
No, 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 there are two classes of emails now, yeah, okay? There's called non-exempt, which you wanted to guide, and there's exempt, which requires some sort of reaction. That's the only two we got nowadays. And early on, when we're pulling stuff out of people's personal stuff, we had emails that were not city business. You're familiar with that. And so we had to cull those out. So, but, but, but yeah, we've spent a lot of time on it, we do not have a full-time IT person.
Well, it'll take a while, then we can.
Yeah, and so as I do, I run a certain amount of hours a month of responding to public record requests, and on top of that, we put in overhead time to get the files up.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to know how it runs. I wasn't really sure what the procedures were of it, so if you could give me a copy of that, then that really satisfies my curiosity.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
That, actually, I have a little request, also, I'm curious, because I haven't seen the procedure either. And what I'm interested in is, is, do we have a, I guess I'd like to have a copy of the procedure too, rather than ask a bunch of questions.
I'll make a little book, how to open your email.
No, 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 I'm talking about just strictly public records.
Of course, I got all that stuff, I've sent it out many times, I will, I'll make a little book of that.
Okay, and do you mean that this is our procedure for handling public records, that's what I'm interested in?
Ah, the procedure for handling.
I mean, how do we choose?
Let me finish, the procedure for handling public records, there's a couple of documents that we can, that we have options, like that we can change something. The rest of it is RCW, followed by the model rules, followed by case law, okay? So you write something, and next week it might be what you thought was right is now wrong, this happens to many agencies on this. And so you have to constantly adjust to case law and their interpretations of it.
Okay, so I would like to see a copy of our procedures.
That's all I'm interested in, yeah, just our procedure.
I'll give you an example of what we do.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Okay, where are we next? Startup Water District, okay, John, this is yours again.
Okay, basically, we have an interlocal agreement with Startup Water District, it's about fifteen years old. Their operator comes and he borrows a water meter from this and a water diffuser when they flush their hydrants. And occasionally, you know, if he's gone and something's, he needs somebody to stand by, and Richard and I call him, oh, we'll help out if something happens. And we have his numbers and stuff like that. But he came to me wanting some help here last week, and, you know, we're pretty short on crew, Richard's holed with his mother and father this week, so there's just me, and I just can't help him this week. But it's a pretty big interlocal agreement, it's fifteen years old, the prices, if you look at, if you look at the prices for dump truck backup and that sort of stuff, it's pretty low. So with the council's blessings, I'd like to here with them and come up with some current interlocal agreement where it would work for us and it would work for them, this is the rise, and then present that to the council.
So I'm not inclined to decline his request, but I observed, and I'm a little bit evil in this regard, but I observed that throughout his letter, he mistyped this, the city name, it's two words, not one word.
Ah, it used to be one word.
Well.
It's one word, but it has a capital B in the middle, doesn't it?
No, no, you go look at the sheriff's sign.
I, so the reason, I'm assuming the reason it's that way out on this highway too, is because we allow that to occur.
Yeah.
No, it used to be one word, small d. And at some point in time, it became two words, capital B. And I don't know when, I wasn't here at the time. But the older, older documents are one word.
So that's, that's just a.
Let's just say our ancestors.
Yeah, I did the same thing, I got.
But anyway, with regard to the, I, yeah, I'm not inclined to decline, to decline his request, I think it's a fair request to update it. And then I'm gonna be a little bit contradictory and think about economies of scale, because I just got done making a comment with regard to, when it comes to the budget, whether we want to retain the water system. But I want to know if we would consider on economies of scale as a joint operation to start interested in a joint, in bringing them all under one umbrella. That's another question. Since we haven't, if we were talking about an interlocal for emergencies only, but if we're talking about doing an agreement.
Well, then that would be billing and stuff like that.
Yes, exactly.
Wouldn't that be income coming into the city?
Well, I'm sure that their water district runs in the black. But you also then, I just don't know.
So I'm just asking if we would want to ask him that question to see if they would consider it.
Oh, they just got a bunch of.
They might be part of PUD.
No, no, you're the relie, and they just got a big grant, what, a year and a half ago?
Yeah, right to replace their.
All their pipes, all their pipes and hydrants are there.
Now, I'm curious on this line of economies of scale and stuff in the water. Because one of the things about the water department is, is it is a very good fund, it keeps itself going and enables us to actually have a few more people around. And if we were to give it as a water department, we'd have to give rid of more people. And I don't think that's a wise idea, quite frankly. I'm not quite sure why you're considering it, so that's what.
No, it wouldn't be getting rid of it, it would be a cooperative agreement.
No, no, I was going back to the previous.
Previous group, about.
About the water department, so I'm wondering what's the motivation to do that?
That's beyond, that's beyond scope right now.
That's something, I have good working relationships with the operator down there, and his name's Ken, it's not Ned. You know, and I'll bring that up, and that'll probably be around tomorrow.
Yeah, I do think that.
But is this something that the council would enter, you know, entertain for the time being to upgrade the fifteen-year-old interlocal agreement?
So these are new numbers?
No, those are.
No, those are old numbers, we're trying to face up to.
No, here it's now.
So I think we agree to that with the stipulation that no graphics, and then we get a, we get a review of it and prove it before it actually comes to session.
Certainly. You know, I, in fact, you're probably gonna be seeing more of these come up, because I found a file today with.
Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, so we'll, John will work on this. And please, John, in your, in your draft, make Gold Bar two words.
Yes, correct spelling.
I didn't know it was one. Did you know that?
I didn't.
You, you.
I answered to the spell.
Okay, well, we had some vandalism on the new sidewalk. Okay, here's some examples, this is on the east end, just east of the culvert, somebody walked through here, rode their bicycle through here. The, the contractor tried to repair it, thought this was a good repair job, and he had several no's, and, yeah, fill in the hole, but not going to start ugly. We had someone that's on the west side, next to 13th Street, and someone decided they would memorialize himself.
It's the house right there.
Yeah, and then here is some bicycle there, but this is so light, it'll probably disappear in the next two rainstorms. So we, the situation is on this, is, it is in discussion, the, here is, yeah, here is the letter. Here we go. Here is the, the letter that was sent to the contractor by the project manager. He basically said that you're done, and that's, that's kind of hard, but that's, that's, that's in that three-inch thick contract that you get with the federal contract.
Yeah, but the thing is, is they didn't mark it off real well too. I mean, two little cones, I mean, that really doesn't mean anything.
That was, that was, that was the reason for this, is he said it was, did I take reasonable precautions or exercised self-construction practice?
Very true.
So, and this is going to be a multiple thousand dollar hit to the contractor, and we will see where it takes us. We're still under budget, we're still, you know, pretty much finishing, but we're not going to accept the sidewalk with that sort of stuff on it. And.
Would be accepted either.
Yeah, and so, anyway, so that's, that's about it. And I'm not sure how long this is going to take to get this on. Okay, next. R.
Minutes.
Minutes? I didn't, I didn't put minutes in. Can, are these the ten minutes? These are the minutes that you were sent, but if nobody can open their email, you never read them.
You read them?
Oh, you read them. Shouldn't you open your email?
Yeah, since I made that one change, I finally got the right connection in there.
Oh, okay.
I can read my email now.
Okay, can you, you can open files?
Oh, yeah.
So it's working for you?
Yes.
Okay.
It's that very first, that very first line.
Magic, magic.
The, the magic six hundred characters, it goes way down there.
Yeah, well, I.
But, you know, that's what did it.
It would make it your favorites, and that's what I did.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, where are we? Okay, here's.
Yeah, because I, I hit mine, and it says, I have to get in, it's the City of Gold Bar, and then it comes up with that the certificate is not authorized, or whatever that word is. And then I have to click something else, and then something else comes on, and then I get in, and then once I get in, if I want to open a, a thing, it says, you don't have permission to open this, and then I have to go down and click something else, and then it finally pops up.
Okay, well, that, that should not be happening, because I, I entered mine stuff through the internet while I was out, and it worked fine. And I, I entered it before I left, and it didn't work fine, so I called the IT guy, and later on it did, so. Well, that's to see what's going on in specific. Okay, well, this is the minutes for October the second. Does anyone have, okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for October second.
I'll, we'll approve the minutes for the second.
A second, we're both second.
Okay, who wants a second?
I'll second the motion.
Maybe seconds, okay. Any, did I notice any changes, corrections, and what?
I only noticed one odd thing.
What's that?
Is Elizabeth was a council member, and I was a council man.
Yeah, that's with that.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering with, I'm, I'm.
If some people get, they don't want to be considered councilmen, so I didn't want to go, do you care?
It doesn't matter.
If it was a council member or council.
Do you want to make a legislative decision?
I would like to be called a council member.
Okay, council member from then on.
Council member is fine.
Okay.
Council member.
Do you want to change on this one, or?
No, not required to change on this, you know, just noticing it.
Okay, from now on, give me that one.
From now on, council member.
Okay. Any, any other changes, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Thank you. Okay, now let me go back to here where we were. And we are now into.
Vouchers.
Vouchers, okay. Our check registers.
Right.
Depending on, we got check, which piece of paper you're reading. So, first of all, I want to address the point that, that the amended agenda has printed red, and under vouchers, they, there is some red. But what I want to state is that the Finance Committee as a whole considered all of the vouchers, including the last one, which is item 1698, which is voucher 17566. So, as I make this motion, it's all been already reviewed by the, by the Finance Committee. So, so this amendment was actually occurred before we met as a committee and did the review, so that's my comment. Okay, with that being said, I make a motion that we accept and approve payroll vouchers 5214 through 5217 for a total of $2,800, and that we accept and approve 2012 vouchers 17534 through 17566 for a total of $98,829.48, a grand total then of $101,629.48. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, I have a question. On transaction 1675, it has a very nice description of where all the money went, individual pieces.
Yes.
I really like that. Is there a way we can get the same thing for item 1678?
That all went into, that's, that was one, that's one, it just went into one.
Yeah, law line and there's one lawsuit.
Thank you.
And is that related any to block suits, or is this a whole different one?
No, this is block lawsuit number two.
Block number two.
The law line?
Yeah.
The law line is the block two.
I'm sorry, what was that?
What'd you say?
I was just remembering.
So, just to advise the council, my, my primary concern is, is I review this with the Finance Committee, is to ensure that we don't exceed our budget limitations. And so I'm more concerned about whether it falls into city or into litigation fund. And as, I didn't bring my budget here with me, but we're, one of these funds, we're at, I'm not sure which one at the moment, we're at 95% expenditure, 96% expend, at budget, and the other one, we're at 91%. So, we're, we're into 90% but, but we're still okay for these conditions. Okay, we had a motion second, I believe?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Thank you very much. Well, so now we got to the second citizen's comment, do citizens have any comment?
I want to apologize for the fact that I handed the note over to Ken. I never gave it a thought as to a procedure. I should have stood up and, and made it that notation. I'm sorry that the reporters had to make it into something that was supposed to be something positive, make it look negative. The other thing is, is when I inquired about you having an attorney, I said, the Gold Bar reporter was alluding to the fact that you were wrongfully using the attorneys, and that was a question I asked you, and you said by law, he was required to. So again, I wish you girls would quit doing negativity, do something positive, for goodness sakes. You've got so much energy to put that stuff on the blog, why don't you do something for the city?
Any comments?
Susan Forbes, 209 Seventeenth Street. I want to make it quite clear that everything this on the Gold Bar reporter isn't written by three people. I can tell you exactly what I have on there right now. I went for a seventeen-mile hike, I took pictures and posted them on the Gold Bar reporter. I put a link for International Girl of the Day, I put up a link, I think it's gone now, for Comparing Candidates, so that you could think for yourself instead of believing you're a political ad, you see. I'll take credit for the links to all the different agencies, the restaurant page, I think I created that. That's the extent of what I've got on the Gold Bar reporter right now, and I really trust you would distinguish the fact that there are more than, you know.
The travel page, you created the travel page, is that?
Yeah, she mentioned that.
Thank you, Susan. And so that brings it down to one person, and so it's Ann Block, because she's saying she's not doing it, you're not doing it.
If I post something on the Gold Bar reporter, if I send you an email, you're going to know you get it from me.
Right.
And I would appreciate keeping that in mind when you're telling people off.
I will, I will, thank you.
Susan, can I ask you a question, please? October, the whole month of October is Friends Cancer Day, and I appreciate it if you'd put something in the Gold Bar reporter about that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, your icon, that's right. Joan Amen, 13th Street. Thank you, Mr. Ware, for your courteousness in acknowledging this situation with the paper, appreciate that. You know, when my husband was in office, no one was more vilified than he and I. So if you hear, though, that was a really good idea. I know about bullying, cyber and otherwise. I have been skewered for years. My favorite bullying moment was when my attorney sat here, backed up where I'm thinking Mr. Del is sitting, and told my husband, who's sitting right where Mr. Strong is sitting, control your wife in the middle of a council meeting. That was priceless. I am not bullied, I am making records requests, Mr. Ware would not know where the fraud investigation was if I hadn't asked, and you will be received updated, I promise you. None of you would be getting updates on certain issues if we did not ask. I apologize for nothing, because I have the evidence for what I say. And if you'd like to ask me for it, simply email me. Everyone here knows, Susan, I, and Ann identify ourselves, as opposed to some people I could say on the Sky Valley Chronicle, who do identify themselves. No one's complaining about them. I wonder why, you don't know who they are. But anyone has a problem with them. It's amazing. Thank you very much for your hypocrisy.
Having no other citizen comments, are there any motions for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
And that's it for that.